Good evening. Thank you for coming and joining us. Always good to see Melissa. She's on there. Um, anyway, Director Bishop, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, any members of the media online? Just raise your hand and Michelle will let us know. Don't forget to mute your cell phones and when you're speaking, please turn your mic on and turn it off when you're finished. We're gonna have something a little different tonight. Uh, we have a short, regular business meeting. And then we will adjourn that and then go into a work session. So just to give you a heads up about what's happening. Um, and right now Superintendent Corden, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate that. Um, in terms of the review of the agenda, we do have two items. Um, you'll notice, uh, items four and five were adjustments here. I'm gonna start with item four. Um, tonight, the, uh, we've talked before about the Renew, um, School, America Schools Grant, which was about a $2.5 million federal grant. Um, we've been working with them on some, we don't have the grant award yet. This would be air quality, air conditioning for Joe Lane and Eastwood. But there, they informed us that we need to have an approval for a project manager before September 1. With that quick timeline, we appreciate adding this to the agenda tonight. That's item number four. Um, I will probably make an adjustment to item five. Um, we have considered, uh, and I think we'll have Janet send a communication out to the board, uh, potentially adjusting our September 10th meeting at, uh, the Chair's request, Madam Chair's request to the 17th and combining our meeting that was currently scheduled on the 10th of September for a business meeting, 24th for a work session to potentially combine both those meetings to the 17th. Janet will follow up with a email to confirm if availability works on that. So we'll, we'll, uh, she'll get that sent out tomorrow. And that's all I have for the review. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I look forward to finding the results of your availability to meet on the 17th. Um, one more thing from Superintendent.
My apologies. Uh, I do have one other thing. Um, our consent agenda has been updated to include a new hire, Frederick Schmidt, who is the financial literacy teacher at RHS, and that is noted in the consent agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, on to number one, our consent agenda, which is pages one through 10 in your packet. You've had a chance to review that. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will make that motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Um, then we have our nomination for the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee Regional Member. I spoke about this at our last meeting. Um, you also had all of this information in your packet. I trust that you had a chance to review that. It is a position that serves our district, um, our region for two, two calendar years. And Director Hammerson has gracious graciously submitted his name for consideration of the vacancy in the Douglas South Coast Region. Now, these board members have to be nominated by their own school boards in order to be eligible for consideration. So if we decide, or we've, we vote him in, it will still be put on the ballot for all of the school board members in that, that area to vote on him as well. Uh, cause there may be other people who throw their hat in the ring. So I would entertain a motion to approve the nomination of candidate Steve Hammerson to a position on the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee for the Douglas South Coast Region. Position number nine.
I am happy to nominate Steve Hammerson for that position.
Great. Do we have a second? We got it first and a second. Any discussion? Well, I think it's great. It's, it's wonderful that we are gonna have a voice for our people. And, uh, I know Steve will represent us well. Director Leone. Yeah, so every single school district may vote for one of their board members. And then the ballot will come out, I think it's in October, November? And then, well, they get one. Every board gets one nomination. So we'll have maybe six boards and they all have, and then we'll vote, we'll get the six nominees and we'll vote for one. So. You know, it, it could happen, but you know, from what I've seen in the past, two or three tops, you know, so, yeah. Anyway, so we have discussion, um, all in favor? Aye? All opposed?
I'm not saying.
Motion passes. So, yeah, so the, the deadline for it is in Sept- September 30th. So sometime after that, we'll get an official ballot from OSBA. And then we'll have it on our agenda to vote for whatever candidate we want. Okay, item number three, it's on pages 13 and 14. Back to 13 of, of your packet. So we have Assistant Superintendent Michelle Neese Memo, requesting approval for the purchase of 500 CTL Chromebooks for student use. Each device includes a two-year warranty and will be purchased from CLT Corporation at a total cost of $157,000. You also have that quote in your packet on page 14. Now, I do want to note, this, the funding for this purchase will be provided through the Technology Replacement Fund within the General Fund and is part of our regularly, regularly scheduled Chromebook refresh replacement process. So, um, I would entertain a motion to approve the request to purchase 500 Chromebooks from CTL Corporation in the amount of $157,000.
Oh, motion to purchase Chromebooks.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion, questions? Director Leone?
It's, it's not because of damage. The, the Chromebooks have a certain life that they can still be updated. And so they run, they're like, run out of their life cycle basically as a device. And so we have a replacement program where we buy so many each year to replace the ones that have, that are now out of date.
So that whole pencil thing, that's not an issue or hasn't been an issue or it's because, and there was discussion before about this, um, on what we were gonna do to prevent some of.
Well, and that's also why we got the two-year warranty because within that two-year timeframe, they'll be replaced by the corp, by CTL. We won't have to pay for those replacements with the warranty.
If, um, so within that two years, they will cover any machines that we have to turn in. What can we do with the ones that are no longer able to update? Is there a?
There's a recycling program for that.
And that's, they have to go right to the.
Yeah, to surplus, we surplus them and then they go to be recycled, electronic recycling.
It's kinda like us, as we get old, fall apart. We get, we get, yeah, exactly.
But we get put on Denny's List first.
Michael, there is, there is damage. Cause we've been told damage and, and, um, kids, they get lost. I mean, it's part of running, it's part of running business. And so I'm assuming some of this is.
There's some, but I can tell you also, we, um, we are moving at the middle schools that, um, the devices are no longer going home with students. They're going to be staying at school because where the majority of our replacement was happening was in our middle schools. Um, so we did make an adjustment. They can check them out to take them home if they need them, but most of the time they will just be staying at the school. And so we needed to get a few more devices to make sure we had enough to cover that they could all access them at school. Um, and have enough to cover each of the classes. So they won't be traveling with their Chromebooks at school. Each classroom they go into will have a cart basically that they will access what they need. And then it goes back in the cart and then they travel to their next class.
So for the ones that do go home, uh, say that student damages it or throws it or does something to it, are the parents liable to pay for it? Or are we just gonna say, okay, that's.
They do sign an agreement for them and we do, I mean, we, in the past, whenever, um, previously, we, we did not bill the parents, um, but now they do sign an agreement. Usually it's the first offense, they get a warning, but if they, you know, damage it and second one, then we can send the bill to the parents.
That's the end of the discussion and all in favor? Aye? Motion carries. Um, item number four, we have Project Manager Selection Renew America Schools RES Grant, which is page 15. Jared referenced this earlier. So this is, you'll find on page 15, Danielle Littlefill's memo to you explaining the request for approval of a contract for, to CSS for a proposed project management contract in the amount of $52,727. And of course, this is contingent upon the award of the Renew America Schools Grants. Fingers crossed. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve a project management grant with CSS in the amount of $52,727 contingent upon the award of the RSA, RAS Grant.
I will motion to, uh, approve the RS, RAS Grant.
Great, we have a second. We have a second. Um, any discussion? Director Leone?
So when we talk about, uh, project improvements, what, what is that? What are they?
This is the Renew America School Grant, and this is specifically for Joe Lane and Eastwood for air quality and HVAC.
Okay, is that the first new ones or to put in air conditioning into the system?
They currently do not have air conditioning. So yeah, so it'd be whole new systems going in. $52,000 is just the project manager piece that we have to have approved. Yes. This is, this is, once we get the grant, yeah, then we'll have the total amount and how much those costs will be to us.
So, so the project manager, that would be is they're paid for the manager? Is that a?
Correct.
For an employee or is it an, an internal employee or an external?
It's, it's a contractor. So it's a contracted service project management company.
So that amount came from where? How do we, did we offer quotes to find out what state it would be?
Yep. Um, I, so if you look, I had, um, we were a part of an RFP with South Umpqua and Winston Dillard, and we had two recipient, two vendors come back with proposals. And then we used the grant metrics to score those, and that's how this vendor was chosen.
And this is paid through the grant. Yep. So it's not out of our pocket. Uh, Director Cotton?
So a couple of questions, and I apologize if I presented, I didn't catch it. So the $52,000 for the project manager will not be spent unless, so we're not spending this $52,000 and then never get the grant?
Correct. We, we will not owe $52,000 unless we get the grant.
So it's that money's just kind of, it's just kinda shaken there for, for a minute. And who, who, where did the directive come that we had to do, do this tonight? The prop?
It's from the grant itself, so.
Which, which is the federal government?
It's, it's the federal, correct.
So we still don't know if we're going to get it, but if they're pushing this, I, I would say it's probably hopeful.
We're hopeful. So the idea was, is because it's been delayed, it has significantly put school districts behind already.
Yeah, I get that. But if somebody from the government.
Yep.
Were the government, you know, they're saying, you have, you have to do this in order to get the grant. I'm, they wouldn't be doing this if they're not gonna give it to us.
We agree it's a really positive sign.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
And this is something that won't be done till next summer, if it happens.
If I, if it happens, I don't know when, I don't have a timeline yet and I won't until we get approval.
But it's, it's not, it's not gonna happen during the year.
I, I don't have that information.
If they said mid-year, you can get your two-point film, you know, $5 million grant, we wish.
Yeah.
The actual work.
Yeah.
We, we can't do that actual work during the school day. I mean, they're gonna be up. So, alrighty, that's.
So, sorry about that question. So, once we, so we project manager, say, we'll get that grant, get this.
Um, there we have it.
Do we know, have, have we, is this person gonna try to figure out how much this is gonna cost to actually implement the HVAC systems into the school?
So yeah, they, they manage the entire project and all of the requirements of the grant.
We don't know how much that's gonna be. Is this a million, $2, $2 million projects? Do we have any idea what kind of grant we was going after?
It's, it's speci-, so it's specifically for Joe Lane and Eastwood because we, we gave that information. Um, as far as how much we're going to receive and when we'll receive it, we don't know. We won't know until we have quotes. Yep.
Okay.
And I can, if I can mention one thing just real quick, it's probably good context. I believe seven school districts in Oregon received the grant. And there were 10 schools total, I believe, and we have two of those 10 schools, and this grant's pretty significant, uh, $2.5 million. And we, we believe we could, we could need to put hmm, an estimate of up to half a million dollars in addition in to complete these projects. Potentially, that's kinda what we're thinking, but it's grant dependent on the, on the, receiving the award.
Great. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, motion carries. Uh, do we have anyone online that is wanting to partake in public participation? Does not appear so. Okay, um, that being said, I will adjourn this regular board meeting. Okay, do we need a quick recess? Are we ready to keep going? I think we can keep going. Alright, so I'm convening this board work session. I call it to order, and, um, I'd like to hand it over to Jared. We are going to be working on our strategic plan and, uh, take it away.
Thank you very much, uh, and thank you to the board for allowing uh, me to help kind of walk us through this, uh, beginning stage of reviewing our strategic plan. I also wanna thank my team. Been super, super helpful and the data you see today was, would've been our team leaning into, um, doing a bit of review on our own, on our own side of things. That's been great. So just for some context, we, the 25, 26 year, welcome to the start of the year. And we are in year five of a five-year strategic plan. So this is our last year with this plan. I wanna thank the board for your work and your consistency in developing this plan and sticking to it. It has been a galvanizing, in, it's made a galvanizing influence on how we operate as a school district. Um, so what we're gonna do today is really review the board's strategic plan, but look specifically on effective operations. So we're gonna take this quadrant, and this is gonna be the focus of the discussion today. What I want you to think about as we kinda go through this process, and I really want this to be interactive with the board, is really kind of asking the question of how have we done? Have we made progress in this, this portion of effective operations? And, um, I'll have some prompts as we go through to kind of look through this. So hopefully by the end of this presentation, the board can get a report on how the district has done with this.
Do we have a packet?
You should have a packet on this.
I can't find it.
Okay. First out here. We'll make sure to get a packet. You should have one there. I don't see it either. Okay. So we will, um, you wanna pause right here till you get a packet or just kinda work through?
Um.
This is where I. Okay, I don't think. Okay. It'll be, it'll be those.
Because we don't see one.
Yeah.
Oh, it's coming. Just listen very well.
Be here, so. Let me, um, what I can do is let me all slow down a little bit while those are received. We should, Janet will go get those right now. Alright. Let me just walk through a couple of things that may not require the packet. At our kickoff this year, we talked a little bit about these four tenants of, um, of kind of a framework of, it was a recent Gallup poll. And I'm gonna step back here and it was interesting because this poll looked at, they asked people to identify a leader and talk about three things that, that leader provided them. And we talked and the, how it, this was a poll that was, um, that was given across 52 countries and about 70,000 participants and I, uh, we talked about this the other day, so I don't need to continue, but I really think is an interesting connection between hope and having a plan, establishing trust, having compassion and stability as we think about effective operations. I'll give you an example of this. It's important we have a balance with this. During COVID, and additional funding that came to the district, organizations that, um, maybe focused exclusively on compassion, did some things where they just used the funding in a way that led to an issue with budget reductions in the future. What that did is provided less stability. We heard about districts that ran out of funds. It impacted stability and it impacted trust. So what, what I hope we can talk about today is when we think about effective operations, it really should be rooted in a plan, a clear plan that we have that accelerates trust, is based in compassion and also provides stability. So it's an interesting framework for this. I'll, I'll, let me, all these packets should be coming pretty soon. Before we jump into it, I think I can just do the next slide or two, okay? Um, so as a reminder, today, we're gonna focus on effective operations. In September, we're gonna move counterclockwise in our current strat plan. September, we'll look at safe and inclusive and do an audit. How have we done there? We can bring some data to the board. Feel free between now and then. If there's a, if there's a specific component of that the board wants to know more about, we can lean into that. October, we'll focus on leadership development. And then we'll conclude our audit and our work sessions in January with appropriate and timely instructions. That's how we'll work in there. Okay, let me move forward with this. Um, this will be the last slide before we get to packet. Okay? Does that sound fine? Okay. Okay. Okay, no, it's okay. I thought you had them. I, totally fine. Alright, so let me talk about this a little bit. Here is what our strat plan says, that we will align our district resources and establish data-informed systems to support exceptional learning environments. So I think it's important for the board to realize effective operations, the premise of effective operations, a couple of thoughts here. It is applied to every portion of our organization. It's applied to teaching, learning, student services, our HR team, the way we think about finances and facilities. And we have built systems so we understand, are we getting return on our investment? The corporate world, if you look at like corporate America potentially, oftentimes effective operations is code for, we need to save money. We don't necessarily view it that way. We view effective operations, if we go back to the strat plan. Okay, effective operations for us means this. The board has an expectation that students will receive the care, support and instruction they need to graduate with plans for their most successful future. When we think of effective operations, it's how do we ensure that we're getting to that? So that's the lens in which we do this. Now, do we, have we saved some money? We'll talk about finances in a minute. We've done a pretty good job auditing that, and it's important to realize that financial resources accelerate, they're the gas for all things. We think about staffing and curriculum. So, but it's not our intent. Our goal is to make sure that we can accelerate the board's vision in the center of that. That's how we look at effective operations. Alright, so I think we have things coming. All slow down a little bit here as you get some things because I do want you to see, be able to see these. Um, the, the strat plan talks about aligning resources and establishing data-informed systems. So we, when we think about resources, we have things like our own district budget. We are out seeking grant budgets in addition. We think about our resources of our people, our facilities, our curriculum, our technology platforms. Those are the resources we have. And we've done, I think, a, a, a better job over the last five years in my opinion of being data-informed and better controls, better, um, uh, we, some of this has just been systems we've created to make sure we have analytics to understand how we're doing with things like our financial analysis. We've up, you know, we have a new financial system that gives us more up-to-date. Uh, looked at that and we've had some internal, um, conversations about how to improve that. Our facilities assessment, or what's our grant income might be. Uh, even things around attendance, better, a better data system to say matching our resources to building systems that help inform us. I go back to this, everything we do has to answer a simple question. Are we getting a return on our investment? Are we getting an academic return on our investment? So are we getting a return on care? Are we getting a return on support? Are we getting return on instruction? And are we getting return on graduation? And those are key measures in the strat plan. So we're looking at how to, over the last several years, we've taken a look at where are our resources? How do we have more data-informed systems over the last couple of years? They're being printed? Thank you. Okay. Oh, here they come now. Great. Oh, okay. Well, they're, it's, it's popular. I'm sure people want them. There you go. Okay. Alright. It's actually really good timing for you to have these here, and I'm gonna go ahead and as, as those are passed out. So I, I wanna just mention something. What I'd like to do tonight is, I, I, before we jump into a couple categories, I want you to clearly, clearly understand, we don't have time tonight to go through every um, single area in which we've applied this. So I'll give you an example. Um, in 2019, when I was hired by the board, one of the questions I received from the board, I was there, um, he asked, you asked about curriculum. What are we gonna do with curriculum? We had, we had, um, I think it was ELA that hadn't had an adoption since, it was like 18 years or something, if I remember right. It'd been a long time. And there's reasons for that. We had, I mean, there were budget issues. There's always a reason for that. But we looked at, we looked at things like curricular cycles and how to make sure we have the supports kids need. And so we've done this in every single area of the district, but I thought tonight, what I would do, and you, you're welcome to bring other areas up too, is tonight I wanted to go through four areas. I wanted to go through staffing tonight. I wanna go through, take a look at communication. These are key things the board's talked about, finances, and then end tonight with facilities. The board has other areas you wanna explore within effective operations. We can do that. So if that's okay with the board, we'll go ahead and launch into those areas, okay? So I wanna talk, we'll start with staffing tonight. And what I'm hoping that you can do is, is I'm gonna share some up-to-date data with you. And then I'm hoping we can engage in a conversation that's pretty authentic, like how, how do you think we've done since we adopted this? Are we improving? And then also asking the question too, what do we need to do better? Where are we still lacking in this area? So let me talk about staffing for a few minutes. Um, thanks to the board, we were able to really increase the strength of our contracts. Um, both for our classified and licensed staff, our administrators as well. And the last round of contract negotiations, actually, even though those happened independently, they all were settled around the same time in the same year. Um, so we've had, the board was instrumental in that work. Um, I'm gonna give you some data here in just a second about how we've done on filled positions. Um, our HR team's been led by Michelle. Amongst the other things she's doing, have, have done a remarkable job in, um, uh, both filling positions and retaining employees. I often say the most important thing as an organization we can do is hire the right people. The second thing, and it's like not number two, it's like number 1.5, is retain those people. It is an investment strategy. People are our investment. They are, they serve our kids. About 85% of our budget's in people. They're our most important resource. We have to hire the best, make sure they have all the PD they need, and we have to retain. So in this area of staffing, um, if we think about effective operations, if we, we're gonna start with, we're gonna go a little bit backwards and let's go ahead and start with licensed staffing. You'll see this is the first one. If we look at 2022, 23 year, we're gonna give you a kind of a four-year look at this with license. This was kinda where we're at in 22, 23. Uh, we hired 50 new licensed teachers and about half of those were brand new to the profession. Also keep in mind, when we say brand new to the profession, there was there were some changes in licensure that allowed us to hire teachers that really hadn't maybe had training as in teaching. And so because of some workforce issues, it required an extra lean in effort of support to make sure we're adequately supporting teachers. We move forward, you can see the number progressively decreases. Both people that were new to the profession and the number of licensed positions. This year, the most recent data, we had, thank you for those who were able to make it to the new teacher orientation. We currently have every single one of our classroom positions filled. And we had, we have had twenty two new license hires, five of the twenty two are new to teaching. But we are, we are able to, we've been able to hire experienced teachers by and large, and that numbers increased as we moved on. If we look at classified positions, you can see kind of where we're at in twenty three, twenty four and kind of moving forward. We have currently to date ninety nine point nine eight percent of our classified positions filled to date. And all were a hundred percent filled on our licensed. I can tell you, if you've driven by the district office over the last several weeks, there's it's hard to find a spot because we have amazing staff getting amazing PD. It's been wonderful. So that's kind of where we're at in that trajectory of staffing.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Please. How's the point oh two percent?
Yeah.
What is that? What does that look like?
Yeah.
Three hundred and seventy two classified positions in the district. And eight of them are not filled right now. So when you do the math, it comes out to point zero two percent. It's like a tiny percent, but it's not very much. It's really good where we're at right now. And we are actually hiring some more. Megan's furiously working as well as our principals. So we are in a really good spot.
And part of the reason for that is really retention, right? Retention has really been kind of a key, a kind of a key effort on this. So I'll mention just one other thing on staffing too. It's going to come up and we'll talk about the financials, but we have we've done, in my opinion, the right work by ensuring that as we've seen decreases in enrollment, we've made adjustments. And that's been really important. And so we've what that's allowed us to do is is kind of keep our retention numbers where they need to be, but not but be able to also afford and support the people that are currently working for us. So that's been an important strategy for us as well.
So I'm saying in twenty twenty two, twenty three, we had fifty new. Mm hmm. At twenty three, twenty four, we had forty five, that's for six.
Yeah.
That's one of the two now. What would we do with that? Is that because we'll do better retention? Is it because of the program that we're doing, he thinks pieces here and we're definitely.
Yeah.
I mean, twenty four, twenty five and twenty five, twenty six reflect our new contract as far with our licensed staff. Plus providing support and training, retention efforts to keep people here with us. We have less people resigning. The people that resigned this year were either retiring or moving out of the area. We did have a, we had very few that were going to other districts. We always have some. But the numbers are, people are staying with us. And the people that are coming to us, like the experienced teachers, I mean, the teacher you just approved for financial literacy today has ten years of experience. And they are saying, I see what you are doing. I'm so excited to see what the district is doing and I'm excited to come and work with you. So that was the feedback that we received of the new teacher orientation, but we do have more experienced teachers that are coming from districts around us or from out of state. And then they're staying here with us.
Which is great, you know, for our budget as well, right? But I think what excites me the most about this is what it means to the students when they see that constant, especially for the younger grades too, you know, that you don't have a bunch of turnover and it it's just a lot of stability for our students.
Yeah. Worth the comment. I'm glad you mentioned the new hires. Because we had a math position that was, we got a resignation very late. And to get a tenure to replacement, but but I want to make sure and you don't do this to be kudos and things, but for you and your staff and the principals who are who are hiring these people, they have done a much better job from the start. They're hiring the best. They're hiring people that are that you know are going to stay in the district. I mean, yes, the board's done. You know, with the unions, we've done a great job with contracts and things, but you should be applauded, your group and for the people that you're hiring because you're staying. And I think that's where it starts. We can have all this great contracts and things, but if you're not hiring the right people, I've been on the board for a couple of years. And I have never seen numbers like this where, you know, I was stunned when you, we went to the new teacher orientation and there are just schools that they have no new teachers. Staff members like this is fabulous. Some people might say, well, turnover is good. Turnover is good for the right reason. But we're, we're not having turnover for the very right reason. So anyway, thank you. And your staff, I think it's important.
On the, the numbers going down like that for our new licensed hired. That's not because our attendance that we've eliminated or we no longer needed that many.
Our enrollment's actually up right now. We're in the higher mode in terms of enrollment on a trend up. I think the high school days, days back there, but we we were looking at one point at like fourteen ninety three for high school. And I think last we checked, we were over sixteen hundred. So we thought we'd be about three eighty, just so you know, about three eighty three, I think, at freshman class coming in. Last I checked with you, we were at four thirty five and it was on the rise, four forty three. So this is not, this is not due to fewer students. So this is you have, you have that at play too. So we're hiring, which is good, but but the thing that kind of tickled me is talking to a couple of our staff and we're getting people coming because they're saying we're hearing and we're seeing great things happen in Roseburg. They see the support. They see the care that we hope to provide our staff. It's not like here's the keys, good luck, go do this. And we have people seeking us out. And part of that could be, we have a strong contract, that's important. But I think we're building a culture of support that's been helpful anyway. So you know, you're always going to be hiring. I think we're the fourth largest employer in the county and so but I think it's a real positive trend that you see these numbers in terms of filling positions. People that are coming to the profession that aren't, and it's great to have new people. It's not, I'm not, but we're getting people, you know, that are that are working in the area that are that want to be here. And I think that's a positive. So.
But the situation that the field is getting under those same things like those things.
Yeah, yeah, we are. We are. I think it's, we won't know really on that until we get the year started, to be honest with you, but but yeah, I mean, I think some are going different places. We know that for sure and but I, my guess is is we trend toward the end of this week, which is coming up in the beginning of next week. And kids need to be in school that we could see a few more kids coming from there as well. I do, I would like to ask this question for the board and just open this up and just in terms of you know, what have you seen the last five years from your perspective? This is, this is, this plan is I mean, in my role, you've asked me to drive, this is important to you. I know that this is, this is your plan. And so what have you seen? And then, you know, what do you see as challenges and opportunities moving ahead to to better serve our community, kids?
I've heard that teachers feel better supported from administration at the district office.
Great.
Over the last few years.
Great. Yeah. Okay, yeah. No, that's, it's important. It's important. Yeah, okay, yeah.
So I feel like when I first got on the board, oh, did I? Oh. When I first got on the board, there was, there was like some how do I put this? Concern over the structure at our HS. I felt like there was some, it was like an anxiety, a pinch point thing. But you know, the past year, year and a half. I just want to say Vickery's, you know, doing a great job over there and just doesn't really seem like there's any kind of like, I don't know, like, like things that things that need to come to the board to be sorted out or discussed or addressed when it comes to, you know, admin and licensed staff. I mean, you guys are running a tight ship. I I think it's fantastic. So I don't, I just don't see any problems. So it's hard to address them.
Well, I've not been here five years. But from, I think, from the beginning of when I got here till now, I think one of the things that I have seen is a trust from what I have heard from the past to where we are now. That there is with our employees, more of a trust, which trust is, you know, a very important thing that's earned, you know, so I mean, I think there's probably some distrust out there, but I think it's probably more on a federal level where that's being aimed, but I feel like we've, we're on a pretty good track as far as trust goes.
Yeah, I agree with that too, because there's been, it hasn't been us versus them. And when when we came in, you know, it, there was a little bit of that. I felt like the teachers felt like, you know, we were not in their court. And I think we really worked. And it's really paid off to see the, the, the teachers and our classified too. You know, feel like we're more of a, a unit. And we're working all together to do the best for our kids. It's not like we're up here, you know, high and mighty and putting out edicts that they have to comply with. We're all working together to do the best for the kids. And I think there has, we've been really effective in that, in that way.
So, yeah, go ahead.
And I really think that it's because of the strategic plan. Because we actually have something that we're always going to and always reminding us and we're all focused on that. And I think one of the biggest factors is because we have this document.
Yeah. Any of the feedback about staffing in general?
I've already talked about why I think and you're only going to get kudos once tonight. I don't hand them out very often, but I think one of the, to me, the biggest, one of the success and improvements in staffing is you hold people accountable. You hold us accountable. We hold you accountable. That, that to me is a really big success. And you're not, and when you hold people accountable, if they need to move around, if you need to move somebody, it's not that they did a bad job. We think, you know, whatever your reasonings are, and I've seen it over time you have been here, I appreciate that. It's not always easy. And of course, that will always be a challenge. You know, I just, that, people are people. And you, you know, you're, I, I'm, I'm confident that if somebody you need to make a change, somebody needs to go different, you you make it happen. We want people to be successful. We're not in the business of running somebody out.
Yeah.
You know, eventually, you know, if it needs to happen, it happens. They make that choice. And I think that's where the biggest success is now is accountability.
Good insight there. I mean, my team knows this and I, I mean, all these successes are because we have amazing people that that work for us and and so just thanks to our whole staff, it does take a village of people that come around. This is you know, we, we we're working, I think, better because we're working together. And so when we think about staffing, we think about finances and curriculum development and communication. All these things are going together. I will just say, and my team knows this, we're not we love it and I'm, I can be hard to work for because I'm never satisfied. Like, we still can't be complacent on this. There's moments where we should be really proud of this. But also just know that, that we're, we're never done with that. We're always have to keep an edge of how to better help staff. How to better think about contracts, how to think about support and retention. So I really appreciate the feedback. It was great. And those are things we can, we'll, we'll take into account as we, as we, as we move forward there. I want to jump to communications right now. This was a really key, five years ago, was a really, really key concern that the board had in terms of our communication strategy. I think a lot of the things we did around communication were reactive in nature. And I want to give huge kudos. Chelsea's here. Chelsea's been an absolute game changer for our school district in terms of communicating often and well and Tiffany as well. We're great to have Tiffany on board. And so I want to talk about a couple of things we've, we've worked on in terms of how to have a better, a more effective and efficient operation within our communication structure. So as you know, we've implemented a variety of things. There's a lot on here we, we don't have time to talk about, but parent square has been one of those things recently. That was a, a big undertaking because it caused us to kind of audit everything we're doing and to look at all the communication platforms that were out there in this world of like product development. There's a lot of things out there. We've moved toward a consistent integration with our website and whether, you know, parent, parent and district information to kind of to not have multiple hosting sites for things to make it easier, more consistent. And then we've really tried to we think it's over communicate, but you never really can over communicate probably. One thing that's great about parent score is that lets the user decide what they want to hear and filter some things out unless it's an emergency alert. So we've given people choice in the way they receive their communication. Some people want to know everything. Some people only want to know key things. We've tried to increase our communications with our families, our staff, our community with our newsletters. We have thousands of people that read those as they go out. We do have analytics on those. We can see kind of, are they being read? Or at least opened, I guess, is what we can see. And we've also tried to do that with the board and just in terms of listening, what, what is the board doing? So whether that be board bulletins or and so we've made the premise of effective operations, we've looked at what resources we have and we need. And we've take, taken a look at what kind of data informed processes can we have to see if we're, if we have people reading the message, are we, you know, are we effective in delivering that message? We've also tried to listen better to say, what do each of these groups need? And then give again, people's an element of choice. So we're not bombarding people with communication, but giving them the right communication they ask for. So we're kind of in this century now with
Times the year, communication is overwhelming. Beginning of the school year, beginning of the next semester, it is. I know that I'm going to get an email from every single teacher that my kids have. They have seven classes a day. But that's the way it is. I understand that. I love parent square, seriously, because it gives me everything I need to know. I can tailor to what I want. I often ask my wife and she's like, I get the emails too. But it helps me to be engaged.
It's good.
As a parent, I love it.
Yeah. Yeah, we didn't mention like, you know, there's parent view and student view and we tried to, you know, we, we had a there's lots of ways kids communicate and teachers communicate and coaches communicate. We tried to really streamline those so we don't have we heard over previous years, I think we counted at one point seventeen different communication platforms that parents were expected to use across the district. Because, you know, someone does remind or we won't name that, I guess, platforms, but we've tried to streamline that. And again, users like parents, like your family, Brandon, you have an ability to say what you want to receive and not receive. And so unless it's an emergency alert, but I, I do think the communication has improved in some ways. Communication is really difficult to be perfect on because everyone needs something different, but those are a couple of things I wanted to bring up to the board and just ask you successes you've seen, things we need to improve on, as we kind of audit that piece of effective operations, anything come to mind for the board? And things we need to improve on?
Since you're asking.
Mm hmm.
I'm not.
Yep.
No.
The communication's working. There you go.
Sorry. Chelsea's amazing. And Tiffany. It's really great to have professional communication people on your team. And the content, the presentation is, is really, really good. Thank you. So that, just the whole communication over the past five, six years has been great. And then improving and I like, I'd like, you know, And I like, I'd like, you know, I like getting communication. It's like your doctor's office. You got appointment and you get eight reminders. But I guess it's kind of cool. You know, you, you, you should never be late or, but I think communication is much better. I, I do just want to remind folks because there's been a couple of glitches and you're, you're asking about challenges and opportunities. We're not elected to micromanage as board members. And I think I've seen it over the years where it's happened. But I think we, a little better job could be done, not, not from your perspective, but there are things that have gone on that the board is surprised, little minor things. And I don't think that should happen. Uh, we know that you and administration, they don't like surprises and we shouldn't get surprises. And so we're part of the team. And so I think if there's a change, let's say hypothetical in athletics or something, it'd be nice to just get, hey, you know, this is happening. Um, it's not a micromanaging thing. It's just that we kind of need to be in the loop. So if we're out and about and a public comes up to us and we don't know, I don't like to look like I'm stupid. I can do that myself. But that would be the only little itty bitty opportunity for improvement in my luck.
Good, great suggestion there. Thank you. Anything else? Yeah, Keith?
Just, there's a few things that the board, you know, communication with the acts, I think we're doing a great job with, you know. Really, parents are being well aware and the community makes a big difference. Cause I remember when we, I'm sure when we hired you, you know, it was kind of like.
Being closer.
Oh, sorry. When we, you know, when we, when we added your position, you know, at first I was like, gee. And, you know, now I see, wow, there's a lot that you do that we really needed. And it's made a big difference. So I'm so glad that we have, you know, the communication sector. And, and now we have Tiffany who's helped. So I look forward to great things continuing.
Great. There's no mind.
Now you're saying true. No, I just, there was one thing we've had a little bit of conversation about, I think we should look into as part of this update of our strategic plan. And it's a communication form, not just with our direct school communities, but with our entire community. I think of the, uh, I think my, on my Roseburg Public Schools app, like the news review app, we don't have a newspaper, but once a week anymore. And we might be able to create something that comes out periodically that could go to our communities and maybe even a hard copy. I still think there's a lot of people in our region that have feel the loss by not being able to unfold and read a document, uh, whatever it might be about. And I think something we could continue to look at is expanding our communication.
I love that. It's a brilliant idea and suggestion. And actually, we're in the process of working on a quarterly newspaper that's sent out to the whole community because people do want that print media. We think it's an opportunity to share the great things happening in schools. And it's on our communication plan that we've been working toward. And so thank you. Hold us accountable to that. We're, that's a great suggestion. I fully agree. Anything we can do to keep our community in the loop would be great. Okay. Yes, absolutely. Yep. It's actually using the same vendor they use to, to do the newspaper. Yeah. All right. Uh, if it's okay, you, you manage here, we're gonna move to financials here. On board. Okay. So I want to talk a little bit about financials tonight. So we have a responsibility to ensure that we provide a stable financial base for our children and our students and our families and our, and our staff. And we, this is something that Danielle's been incredible. She's been a key player in this over since she's been hired and her previous position and now in her new position. Um, and Cheryl did a great job with this as well. This is something near and dear to my heart too, that we have to live within our means. It's not, um, we have to live within our means and we have to plan for future fluctuations. It's worth noting in Oregon, because I, this is not well understood, that there is no floor for funding. Unlike the state of Washington where you have a guaranteed number that, of funding and Oregon doesn't have that. And for people who have been in this work for a while, you've witnessed the volatile nature of funding. We also have, um, now we're connected to global markets. Um, PERS comes to mind. You simply can't work with, um, an, an understanding or a belief that you're always gonna have up markets. We are not recession proof. And we, I'll talk in a few minutes about our facilities. We also have, you know, aging facilities. And we have to put all of this in context about how to work effectively. I want to talk a little bit about where we're at with our financials. We've made, we have focused on ensuring that we have some money set aside in our ending fund balance so that we could weather something that could be catastrophic. If you look at Medford recently and the failure that they had, if you look at other school districts that have dealt with some catastrophic issues, it could be engineering related. It could be just the age of things. We, a, a key important strategy in the board has, I know you're well aware of this and you have asked for this, is that, um, and some of you have lived in the district when there was very, very little money to make payroll. I hold it as a key responsibility personally as a superintendent to ensure that we have a healthy financial reserve. Uh, we don't hoard money. We don't, but we have to hedge, particularly with some of our capital issues um, against the situation in which we're laying people off to pay for needed repairs. So I want to give you a couple of updates. Let's talk about ending fund balance. Rod has, has been here for a few years and Keith was here for a few years before that and back. We are sitting, I don't, I think we're sitting on probably a number we haven't sat at before. But we also have some aging facility, something to think through. Our current ending fund balance is right around $23 million right now. Um, some people that are listening might be like, oh my gosh, the district's kind of hoarding money. But we should remember that our, our capital needs are well over 10 times that right now in terms of systems and things that we feel like we need to do for our district. But that's where we're at right now. Um, we do have a PERS set aside. We're one of 22 out of 197 districts that decided that we need to set aside money to hedge against inflationary issues with PERS and as well take advantage of when, uh, PERS decides to do an incentive for people who have a site account. That resulted in about $1.7 million five years ago. We are also in the pool this year. We're gonna put $800,000 in and get about $200,000 out of that. And so we also have, I think we're about $9 million right now in per set aside. So we're in a, a healthier financial position in terms of liquidity. It's just important to realize that, um, you know, we've, we, we live in a market of volatility. We live in a structure of volatility as it relates to Oregon's funding. There was a revenue forecast that came out today. Um, it was just released today. There's been some news about, you know, reductions and future funding. So we have to think ahead, how to make sure we can continue our momentum. Um, so, so that's kind of where we're at with some of those. So we are continuing to look at grant funding. We, any opportunity, we believe when we seek grants that we are a great place to receive a grant because of our responsibility fiscally, because of our efficacy in terms of timely turnaround, working within a budget. And so we've done a, we continue to look for ways to find funding, grant funding to support and braid with our, our general, our kind of general, um, funding in terms of state school funding. So that's kind of where we're at. Um, I mean, I would go back and say our, our number one concern as a school district, and it could be shared by the board too, is aging facilities. We do spend a significant portion of our money that should be probably in a classroom every year into aging facilities. It's the worst return on investment we receive. It's actually the, the 404 fund, um, and Tracy, by the way, does a fantastic job and Danielle of, of just being so efficient with this money. It's the hardest money to spend for me. It does help with care, can help with support, but it's money at the cost of instruction. And I don't know that I could tell you with a clean conscience or a clearer conscience that it's helping students have, it's leading to their, their, you know, graduating with plans for the most successful future. If we had this money up here, what we could do is that would do a better job with that. It's an area in which we have to continue to keep buildings going because things are old. But I would say aging facilities is an area that, that, um, I understand the practicality and need to do it. But if you ask me where we need to make improvements with return on investment, it is this money hands down, without question. I wouldn't have to think about it. We don't get a good return on this investment. It's a lot of patchwork. It's fixing things that are breaking. And again, Tracy and his crew did an amazing job and rebuilding compressors for air conditioning, all the things that we're doing. But it's, it's not a good investment, but it's needed that we do this to keep our, our buildings up and safe. So with that, I'm happy to just a, ask the question, the board, what have you seen the last five years in terms of our effective operations as it relates to finances? Where do we need to think deeper, do better work on and, and get better at?
In this particular area, I've had a continuity of being involved on the budget committee and serving as its chair. And there are a couple of things that I really think are important to note and to maintain. One is the audit success that we've had and the recognition, the distinguished recognition that our finance department and personnel have had, that is really top notch and is something we could, should continue to strive for. A second one is, as the chairman of the budget committee, when I was, before I was back on the board and then coming back on the board, to be able to say to this community, we have prepared, we have in front of us a balanced budget. Talk to any other level of state and federal government, where's, where are they saying we have a balanced budget? They're not, I mean, we are distinguished in that leadership, I think, and in being able to do that. And that's something, again, should be part of where we're looking for our strategic vision, to try to come forward with that balanced budget, which means we have to manipulate, change around. I get it. And, and then the third thing is when we're looking at the budget is a complicated book. But also to be able to say, um, we have identified over the years and can continue what the major changes, what the major modifications are. And to make sure that the strategic plan identifies that that is an important part of the budget preparation, that that stands, that stands out to anyone that looks at it.
Great. Appreciate that. And it gives me an opportunity again to say thank you, Danielle and your team. Business Office has been just amazing with this. We have great people that have helped us navigate the complexity of how to save when you have big needs and how to be efficient. And so thank you. Other thoughts?
Yeah, I have a. I think the biggest success is that we have a, a team, a superintendent who's been very, he's very honest with us. Not that the other ones haven't, but very straightforward and, and runs the budget like it's his personal budget tight. And that's important. And the continuity in the business office. And I talk about hires. Well, we were all concerned, you know, five years ago, what, what's gonna happen when Cheryl retires? And there we are. We got, you know, we, things worked fabulously. I also think one of the big successes with, with the superintendent is we didn't spend this COVID money. I call it COVID money because it's what it was. We didn't go out and just willy nilly it on staff. I mean, we used a little bit of it, but we used it on, to make our schools safer. We used it on things that in our failed bond attempts, community was telling us, you know, try to do some of this stuff yourself, which we did. We spent this on, on that. We had, uh, fabulous, you know, Cheryl was very great and Tracy on getting seismic grant applications in. Many, you know, I don't know. I saw it here somewhere. It's over $23 million that this district has received from the state on seismic project. I mean, that's a lot of money. And so we, we've went out and we've done what the community has asked us to do. So I think it just comes down to our leaders are, are compassionate about running a tight ship. I have, you know, I can remember when we had $8,000 left ending fund balance, $8,000. I can also remember when we used to have to run a local option levy every fall to meet payroll. I mean, we'd have to borrow money to, to make payroll. That's how, how it operated. This is a much better way of, of running the business. But I think it, all this, the success comes down to people. Comes down to our people and are there challenges? Oh yeah, the challenge is gonna be, what are we gonna get from the state? And, and what are we gonna do to fix our aging buildings? And are we gonna put a great bond package together and have, get support? I, I actually am very, I feel very good that we are going to get a bond that will pass. I think we, I think the community is ready for that. But thank, thank you to the business and thank you to Jared for being so upfront about everything.
Yeah, I'm also amazed that we amounted grant money that we, we've needed and we've gotten. You know, we've put it out for it and we've gotten it. And just appreciate, I wish we had a whole person grant writing, you know, section that could just be feelers out everywhere. I mean, that would be my desire because, uh, you know, if the money is out there and there are foundations and there are different things that have been so helpful. And I'm, I'm glad that, you know, we have someone that's, you know, knowledgeable and, and doing that. But sure would like to give you more help on that, to, you know, have, have more availability, you know, for driving it. Cause your hands are so full with just keeping things, you know, so we do what we do.
I've had people say, well, why don't you get your grant writer to do this and say, all right, team, this is the grant writers right here. So seismic, like we've got, I mean, we've had a number of grants come in this year. And that's because our team, like there, it's just the duties is assigned. We need to go out and do the work and, but you know, we're, and this isn't really a financial thing, but we're, we have one of the lowest percentages of administrators in the entire state in terms of percentage. And we run a very lean organization that we expect people to, we don't have people to do right grants for us, but it's part of the work we just had to grind on and that's okay. And we have benefited, um, since I've been here in six years from every year having multimillion dollars of grants. So we have to continue. You can't be complacent about this because it's the way we're moving work forward. But that's kudos to the team who does the work, not just to get the grant, but to actually, um, make sure the grant is on budget and done well. And so it takes a, it takes a team effort. All right. Um, if there's nothing else there, I wanna, oh, you gotta think, think.
Want a second or third or fourth or fifth? I don't know where I'm at with the grant money. I mean, my. Oh, do we have someone?
Yeah, we're good now.
My personal experience with it was with, uh, the lighting on the, the Roseburg football field. I mean, to me, it's, you know, the initial reaction when we started talking about the lighting on the field was, you know, we have all these other important things to do. We can't afford it. Then we throw a grant in there. I bet, I forget what the, was it a grant that?
We had 1149, we had 1149 money. We had, yeah.
But, but, but then it's like, as the investigation of what this project's gonna do in the long term in terms of energy savings and it just, we couldn't afford not to do it. But just, just to go deep into, you know, investigating every single situation that we have, every opportunity that we have, all the extra work with the seismic grants. I mean, there, there's so much in-depth work that's happening, active. That's saving money in the long run and then we see those returns eventually. So, um, yeah, I just kudos to, to everybody in our district, just really putting eyes on every single project.
Yeah, appreciate that. We, we try to live what we say, which is this, we want to buy here. We want to be here. So we won't enter into an agreement that is going to harm the future of this because this is our community. And we care about our staff and, but we, we're here. I think in organizations in which like, I just got to get through the next two years, I'm going to leave. You sometimes can see people that make decisions that aren't long-term decisions. And what we have on this staff and with this board is people that care about this community. They care about our long-term success and it shifts the financial piece. Because if you have, I'll pick on superintendents. If you have a superintendent that's going to be here for two years, you might make decisions knowing you're going to leave that might be detrimental in three years. And we don't have that here because we have people committed to the success of this community. And that does make a difference. All right, I'm going to, the last one, I want to talk about our facilities. I want to start with a couple of statements about facilities real quick. Our, our buildings on average are nearing 80 years old. So I want to give you a couple of stats on this real quick, just to think through. If we take that on average, many of our schools were built when World War II was still being fought. When our average school was built, the microwave, the color TV, and the credit card had not been invented yet. Cars didn't have seat belts and the Cold War had not officially begun. Think about it this way. When these buildings were built, today's grandparents were in elementary schools themselves. They have served this community for three or four or more generations. We have a building at one of our elementary schools that was built before World War I. We have a closed building on our high school campus that will turn 100 next year. It's actually over 100 because it was started, it was start, construction started in 1924. Remember this, that we are asking our students to learn and gain 21st century skills in buildings that were designed for the needs and technology from the 40s. Just put that in perspective for a minute. We think about our facilities, okay? I want to go through some things about facilities that are a little more like, here's some projects we need to focus on. But please remember and to think about that for a minute. We've done a great job with what we have. But our buildings are continuing to age. And if we think about our financial picture and the money we're spending to keeping them going, it is a concern. So I want to talk about a few things. It was alluded to today, I appreciate that, the number is 25 million, $350,000 since the 1920 years of the year I got here, that we've been able to invest in our schools. Some of these investments have been very long-term, very good return on investment. We think about a seismic project, for example. It's hard to quantify the value of a seismic project, but it is directly related to student and staff safety. And might I add, community safety, because all of these buildings will be the places the community go to in the event of a seismic event here in our community. We've done great work and kudos to many people in this room that's been, that have been highly involved. Keith took a big role in this as well and our building sites committee and the long-range facilities plan. We have a plan and going back to the concept of hope. Hope is having a positive outlook on the future because you have a plan. And I appreciate, we've done some good work in here on facilities, getting an idea where we're at, where we want to be. I mentioned this earlier, but we do spend about $2 million a year annually unless there's something larger that needs to come up. We, we do budget about $2 million a year. We have, we, there's current work happening on the east side of the VOTEC, for example. We are anticipating another seismic grant for the west side, but we'll need to add about 1.4 million or so and 1.7 million dollars more there. So we do have scheduled annual, really maintenance costs of about $2 million a year. That's pretty significant for a district with 12 buildings. But that's where we're at right now in terms of facilities. We do, I do want to let the board know, we have some, some, again, we're talking about effective operations. And this is one I think I struggle with a little bit because we need to, you know, are we doing the right thing? But we're doing, I think, what we need to do to be effective in this and keeping them on time, on budget. We do have some pretty major expenses in the future. And this is again, is a bit of a struggle to figure out how we be, how we can be effective in this. So we're trying to again mitigate the cost, but increase the, the, the time that these repairs and making sure that we're doing them correctly. But we have an elementary school Eastwood that is, has been sinking. It's actually, we'll be there for our next board meeting. This is the second time, I think, where we've put some money into this building. Third time, excuse me, I knew about two, so three. Gives you an idea kind of where we're at with some of the facilities. We, we have some pretty significant needs for things like siding or roof replacement. We've got some, you know, parking lot issues. Seems like we're always working on parking lots, whether it's paving, hot patching. We have one at Fur Grove, if you've been there, that basically is turned to gravel parking lot. These are expensive projects. And then we've got like every single playground at the elementary school really needs to have pavement done and worked on. We'd really like to do soft skate material there, but that's counter, just, it's cost prohibitive really to look at that necessarily, but we'd like to do that. So those are a couple of things we have coming up. I, I wanted to talk about a few other things here, just for some contextual pieces. We also are in a situation, I think some of this has come because of the, we, we saw that structural seismic failure in Medford recently. And I, I don't know, I can't say specifically this is why, but it seems like it could be connected. But PACE are property liability coverage. They have just implemented kind of a new requirement to keep continuity of coverage. And that is that trusses over 50 years old have to be, have to be inspected. There's no additional funding to do this. They have to be inspected like eyes on. Yeah, yearly be covered, has to be eyes on. Now it seems like maybe it's an engineer, we, we don't know the cost on this, but it well, could be like, if you can get someone $200,000 a year, maybe $200,000 for initial inspection. So also as we think about facilities, this puts kind of some of our rural spaces in a little bit more of a bind, where all of our trusses, by the way, are 50 years old. It's every single building, we have all of them. It's kind of a burden for us, I think. So just know on the facility side is, you know, we see some of these changes in coverage that there's a disproportional impact on places like Roseburg where you're going to have to get an engineer in to look at every single space. Want to talk just for a minute about another system, electrical. This is amazing, actually. So if you just think about, I just want to pick, we'll just pick a system out to take a look at. Could have been plumbing, could have been roofing, but we'll just talk about electrical for a minute. That every single building on our campuses and they've, you know, we're nearing 80 years old, have, has an electrical original switch. And that, that is feeding us here. We have a, a number of things like breaker panels that are original. There's been work to make sure we have upgrades. But we think about major systems, we are piecing things together to work. And, and we're at a spot right now where we saw this really kind of with more technology needs that we actually can't get power to a lot of the spaces where we actually need this because of, you know, it was built at a time where it wasn't much, as much need there. So this will give you a little idea where we're at with the facility space. We're really working hard to try to apply effective operations there. How to think about that relative to facilities. But it's an area in which we talk every day about kind of what to do, how to schedule that, how to plan that, how to spend money, the right money on there. And then again, how to somehow quantify that we're getting a good return out of that. We're keeping buildings up, right? And so, and I would just mention one other quick thing here, and that is that, you know, I've heard from a number of people recently about, I mean, air quality with the smoke that's been around, right? There's the fire up in Cottage Grove now, the one, the sisters, the flat fire, you know, been concerns about. We've been real blessed, knock on wood here in Davis County with fires, but the heat was, we feel the heat now coming on and people are saying, hey, what are we going to do with, with these buildings that don't have, you know, air conditioning and air quality? But let me just mention this, that the buildings we think are new, let's take the new main from the passage of 2000 bond, those, those are failing. Why? Because they're old. So what's failing, like the compressors, for example, the air conditioning, even on our new buildings, is at a spot of us needing to put money into those buildings because they're reaching their life end. So even when we think about the new buildings we have, they're not that new. And some of the systems like around air quality are going down. So you've replaced Tracy a couple of compressors, I think. Yep. So just, I don't want to paint a dire picture, but the truth and reality is, you know, we, I would just say, as, as I think about effective operations relative to facilities, it's an area in which I would say as a superintendent, we need to continue to have conversations of how we address this as a school community and more broadly as a community. So I'll turn just that same question back to the board, just where have you seen, we've made progress in the last five years? What do we need to do to address this? How, how can we work better as a school district in addressing this? Open this up to the board.
I'm hoping that when we start looking at the bond, if you think that you just said there and give us all those documents would be, that would really get people got me on this.
Yeah.
That would be really important from a marketing standpoint.
I think that should be in print. People should be able to read that in those stats, you know, and in any newsletters that we're going to mail out because once you read, you know, make a more impact, hear it, read it, you know, see it.
On the other note, I mean, if the bond happens, which that's, we're hoping happens, I still have to come back to that, the fact that we have this real estate that we're not using or we won't use for 20, 50, 100 years from now. I would like to, to readdress that. Because that money that we get from that can be, make a significant impact on, on, on everything that we're talking about. So I don't know, this is the format of time because of the printout, but every time I see, I go buy some of the pieces of property, I'm kind of wondering, 50 years from now, if we have $500 million, we might do something with it. So just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you.
I was going to go back to what we've been doing well. I think this, the grants, that we've managed that very well. And searching for grants, especially the seismic grants that, you know, is really good. And then just managing what we have is phenomenal. When you look at the enormity of what the situation is and that we still have a roof over our buildings for our kids. So that's just not an easy thing to keep all those balls in the air on such a tight budget for that. But, so I think we're doing really well on that. But I, but I also realize the gravity that, that is not, I mean, we can't sustain that. I mean, it, it, it's going to start, those balls are going to start falling. I mean, it's been phenomenal what Tracy and his team, what you all have done. But that is a real scary thought that we can't keep putting money into a sinking ship, so to speak. You know, if you had a, compared it to with a car, you know, we can keep putting 5, 6,000, $7,000 into this car where even you're at a place where this is just not safe and it's not sustainable. So anyway, but I think that's what we're doing good is, is the grants.
My, my dad used to say this term, you can't just keep repairing things with baling twine and, baling twine and duct tape and expecting it to be brand new. Things have an end of life and we are beyond end of life in, on many levels. And I appreciate what everybody's doing. But at some point, the community has to decide what we want and what we're going to be and make a real strategic, fiscally smart decision to finance the things that need to be financed. Or the quality will decrease at some point. You can't keep putting Band-Aids where you need to replace the thing. I appreciate what everybody does, but at a certain point it's futile.
Success, safety and security, safety and security. Oh, did I say safety and security?
I was just going to say, since we're so far down the line with these buildings, I mean, eventually the conversation is going to get scary. It's going to be, it's going to be, it's not safe to put children in this building. You know, I mean, that's, that's kind of where we're.
That's happened.
We're not, we're not there completely, but we're pretty.
That happened with the Heritage Building.
Yeah.
You know, everybody's concerned about the liability. What happened in North Medford could happen here.
Yeah, right.
And, I mean, we're not immune to those things.
So I, I think a deeper conversation, a public deeper conversation should probably take place before, you know, we're even having to have that conversation. So, yeah.
So the average age of our building, buildings are 80 years old. And, and we've talked a little bit about a bond and we'll be working for the next year or so on, on a bond. We cannot, we will not, we cannot present a bond to our taxpayers in the amount of money that we actually need. So we're going to have to be very careful. And I'm thinking, you know, bond is for 20 years. So those, you know, in another 20 years, those built, the average, average age of the buildings are going to be 100. And so we're kind of in a pickle. Big pickle, very big, you know, dill pickle, whatever they are. So, so I'm just, you know, I think everybody should realize that and we do that, you know, we're, we've got to get something done and we need to be selective. The key successes were, I think the last five years is that we've kept things intact the best we can. And, but we have made great, we've done safety and security. And, and we've talked about the seismic. But, but there are some opportunities and it's just my opinion. I don't, you know, whatever it's worth, I would like to see a little bit more put into the maintenance. I don't know if it's a percentage, may, you know, that used, years ago, we, Keith can remember, we put a percentage of, of our general fund or whatever we wanted. It automatically went into it, but I, I would like to see and, and I, and I might differ from some people, I think that buildings, facilities and our maintenance is part of running the business. And, and it's tough. It doesn't, doesn't, you know, we don't think, some might think it doesn't really impact kids, but it does. And, but I, my dream would that would be we would put more money into the maintenance and even if commit ourselves to a percentage, I don't know. But I think we need to do that, just my opinion.
See Danielle had a big smile and I was like, settle down. There's no decision being missed. No, I, exactly. All right, anything else on the facility side of things? In terms of effective operations, how we can improve and get better successes? Alright, anything else on the facility side of things, in terms of effective operations, how we can improve and get better successes? Yeah, we're getting, yeah, I have heard quite a bit, actually, we're getting real close to bringing something to the board that I think. The board will enjoy reviewing. Okay, well, appreciate the time, the the last slide is a repeat from one of the first slides, so again. The intent today or tonight was to really kind of take a look at, it's not comprehensive, but to take a look at a couple of areas in which. We've tried to. Do what the board's asked us to do, which is run an effective organization, we have work, we can always, lots of things we can get better at. Um, I do think we've had some successes over the the last four years and we're going to continue to see if we can. Be more, even more effective in this effective operation in our last year of the of the bond. As a reminder, the work sessions coming up, we're going to kind of think about the the other three quadrants here. So I hope you can spend a little bit of time after this meeting just reflecting on. Is this still an area in which we need to, that the board should be really focused on, it will be an area in which I will be focused on here. And as we think about, you know, where is the board considers the direction and the next strategic plan and. How this might fit in, I think it's a good opportunity to reflect and say, if, hey, whether we really need to continue to make this a priority or we think this is. Doing a pretty good job, it may not be where we need to see it in a strat plan, but other places, this is just a. Conversation to get the board thinking about where you're at in terms of the focus as we as we, this will be the focus this year. Nothing changes there, but as we think about the the board thinks about and considers its next North Star strategic plan, we need to go here. Um, and how this might fit into that. It was the intended conversation for tonight. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Mayor, thank you.
Thank you so much for your thoughts and your input and. For considering it more, you know, as we go into each each section that we review. So also, I just wanted to say, please be looking for Janet's update so that you can reply concerning the meetings in September or meeting in September. The quicker that we can get that established, we can get all the parties. There's a lot of moving parts, we can get those balls rolling, so. Thank you so much, it's been a great evening, you guys are the best, I love working with you, it's an honor. And anyway, so all regular business before the board is concluded and barring no objections, this meeting is adjourned.